Great. Can I get a motion to approve the July 11th minute meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our July 11th, 2024 regular meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing none will move into old business, co and markets site plan approval.
All right. The applicant for co and markets has requested to be removed from the agenda and have consideration postponed until the October meeting. I can provide an update, though, on what has happened with the plan since that initial consideration in April. First, the applicant received approval from the zoning hearing board for their special exception request to construct five fuel pumps and increase one from the current four. Also, a majority of outstanding comments from staff and township consultants have been addressed. The overall footprint of the structure has been decreased from about 5,500 square feet to about 4,200 square feet. And finally, the township and the applicant have come to a verbal agreement to connect the storm runoff from the development into a new sewer line being extended up Thompsonville Run- Thompsonville Road. There are still outstanding minor comments that need to be addressed and new architectural renderings of the structure that need to be presented. Myself and the consultant engineer Josh from Gateway are here can answer any questions on the plan you may have at this time.
The reduction in the, in the square footage, where do you see that? Where does that come from mostly?
I'll be quite honest, Mark's mostly been working on this plan.
Okay.
He's just on vacation right now.
Okay.
I don't know the, I don't know what was removed specifically to remove that, to get down that.
So I remember when this was talked about the first time, a lot of the public comment was around the noise and the lights lighting and so forth. Have changes been made there or is that still where you're considering?
The applicant, the applicant has agreed to remove some of the banding around the K P that will decrease the amount of light from there.
Okay.
They've agreed to 50%, I believe they said a 50% reduction after hours in what was currently allowed.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Chen consolidation.
Okay, this item was initially considered by the planning commission in June, so I'll try to be brief and I can go into more detail of the plan upon request. The plan was tabled at the June meeting to allow council to make a decision regarding your request for a modification from the applicant. This modification request, which was not, to not require P T S A review of the plan, was denied by council at their July 8th, 2024 meeting. The applicant subsequently provided a revised plan responsive to P T S A's comments. The property is located just north of Peters Lake Park and is comprised of an 8.81 acre parcel and a 1.86 acre parcel that are each improved with a single family dwelling. The applicant proposes to transfer 0.84 acres of land from the smaller western parcel to the larger eastern parcel. The only difference between this plan and the one that was initially considered by the planning commission is the proposed vacating of the 15-foot easement on the eastern parcel and the addition of a 25-foot easement centered on the existing sanitary sewers. And this is in the kind of an overview of what that plan is going, the plan is proposing to do on the screen. These changes to the san- with the adding of the sanitary sewer easements was reviewed and found acceptable by Peters Township Sanitary Authority and as such, staff has recommended that the plan be approved as presented.
So refresh our memory, when we looked at this the last time, I know there was a piece that had to go before council. Wasn't the, so the plan was, what we see in yellow and blue, it was all one piece that was going to the other parcel and that's what was objectionable?
That's, what's happening is that, that area that's kind of like a white blue is being transferred from the yellow, was currently yellow to the blue parcel right now.
And that's the difference between what we saw previously and now?
No, that was always the core of the plan. The difference is there was a 15-foot easement on the northern part of the eastern parcel kind of in this area here.
Okay.
And that, it was in the vicinity of an existing sewer line, but it didn't follow what was shown on P T S A's documents. So they were requesting that it be vacated and a 25-foot easement, which is standard for P T S A, be added centered on that sewer line. So after the modification was denied, the applicant went back and did, I believe they did the survey and work to find out where that was and they added that easement at the request of P T S A.
Okay. So it met what P T S A was asking?
They did, yes. They've, P T S A has reviewed this plan, they find it acceptable.
Do you have any idea what the general process?
I ca- I have no idea. All I, they are just tran- it's a lot line shift. It's actually decreasing existing non-conformity because that house is located too close to the side lot lines, so it's a, it's other, other than that, it's just a standard lot line shift.
That was gonna be my question. I see that both existing parcel B and existing lot two are non-con, are non-conforming?
Yeah, the issue with existing wa- the existing with the 166 Canterbury Lane is just that the flag pole, it's a flag lot and the pole is 40 feet in width. It's ordinance requires 50 feet in width nowadays for newly created lots. To create a 50-foot width lot there would require taking property from other pro- taking from other properties. And then the way that the 410 Robin Hood Lane is non-conforming is that it's too close to that side lot line. It doesn't remove this non-conformity, but it lessens it. So only about, it's, I think I, I did the math originally, but, but it's about two-thirds of the area that was within this setback is less by about two-thirds.
And it doesn't, does it by take, by moving that, it doesn't increase, does it increase or create another non-conformity in the, in the lesser?
No, non-conformities are being created and none are being worsened, none existing are being worsened.
Or increased, okay.
And I believe the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him as well.
The applicant owns both parcels of land?
The applicant is the owner of 410 Robin Hood Lane and the part owner of 166 Canterbury Lane.
Okay.
They are also, they, the other part owner for 166 Canterbury Lane understands and speaks very little English, so that, the other individual is the agent for them. They have provided a power, executed power of attorney that the township solicitor finds acceptable, so we have, we have done what we can to make sure that all the part, all the owners involved are, find the plan acceptable.
Okay, so we're as confident as we can be that the
The township's
partial owner is knowledgeable of what they are, what they are agreeing to?
Correct. The township solicitor has found all the documents provided acceptable.
Okay.
Can you, Commissioner Collins?
Nope.
Anything we show, just show?
No.
I'll make a motion
Well, did we ask the audience, has it come?
Yeah, I, I don't think they do. Are the applicants here, but I think we're understanding. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the Chen consolidation plan be approved in accordance with staff's memo dated August 2nd, 2024. And I guess, are there any conditions?
We have no conditions. They, approval, we recommend approval of plans presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Onto new business, Tuscany 2 Plan of Lots subdivision number two.
All right. Staff is receipt of a subdivision application from Keith Higgins on behalf of 339 Just About Land Company for Tuscany 2 Plan of Lots subdivision number two. In the applicant's own words, the objective of the plan is to add an additional lot 219 in request to removal of the temporary 100-foot orchard buffer. In August 2023, council approved the Tuscany 2 residential development final plan. This plan was approved as a 37-watt subdivision under the provisions of the Conservation Residential Overlay District with lots ranging in size from .28 acres to 1.25 acres. Thirty-four of the lots are accessed from the interior street network while the remaining three are accessed directly from Just About Road. A 100-foot temporary orchard buffer was included in the northwestern part of the property to protect, to protect an existing peach orchard on Simmons Farm to the west. At this time, three building permits have been issued for the development. The property is located in the southern part of the township, south of the Tuscany and Just About Farms developments and just north of the Just About Road-Siena Trail intersection. Until recently, the property was vacant. In recent months, preparatory site work has been done and buildout of a 37-unit development has begun. The property is comprised of these 37 lots and four open space parcels. The plan is essentially an amendment of the Tuscany 2 final plan. It proposes to carve a new lot out of existing open space D along Just About Road that would adjoin to the existing lots along Just About Road to their west and be located directly northwest of the Just About Road-Siena Trail intersection. The other change the plan would make from the recorded Tuscany 2 file plan is the removal of the 100-foot temporary orchard buffer. A note on the plan states that this buffer will cease to exist once the applicable EPA regulations no longer apply. The applicant has been asked to provide evidence of this, but it has not been received by the township at this time. However, the 100-foot temporary orchard buffer is not a township requirement and council has discretion as to whether or not it will remain. At this time, staff has taken no position as to whether or not it should remain. As shown by the table on the screen, the proposed lot is a conforming lot and the overall development will still adhere to the C R overlay requirements if it is created. The 100-foot temporary orchard buffer is not a township requirement and is therefore outside the scope of this analysis. Staff recommends that the planning commission table consideration of the plan to allow for those six items listed on the screen to be clarified. Of those six items, the most important are items numbers one and three. One is whether the orchard buffer is to be removed and two, and three is clarity regarding where and how proposed lot 219 will be accessed from Just About Road and the proposed location of its anticipated single-family dwelling. At this time, staff recommends that the planning commission hear from the applicant and any interested members of the public, discuss the matter of the orchard buffer and if a consensus is reached, provide direction under recommendation regarding whether the orchard buffer is to remain.
Can we have the applicant come up, please? Good evening. Use yourself, please.
Keith Higgins Keystone Surveying and Mapping. I am the landsaver on the project. We'll talk about lot 219. Originally, at a submission, an earlier submission, we did have four lots along Just About, but then, if you remember, there's been a lot of back and forths with realignment of that intersection. That has all been squared away as far as I know, so we're, we're getting that lot back in, in the, on, on, on the subdivision plan. As far as access, I don't believe we have, you know, a house type or a buyer for that, but I'm sure that we'd be able to do a, a house fit plan and show a driveway and some grading on how we would access that lot. So.
How does the topography, does, is, is Just About where, like higher, is it, if I'm, I'm mistaken, it sits low?
To be honest with you, I haven't considered, I mean, I'm, I'm just dealing with property lines at the moment. I haven't really considered grading. We do have an engineering company on the project that I'll just kick it down to them and they'll grade in a driveway and any permits or G P permits that need to be approved for that driveway. And obviously, being a state road, they need a highway occupancy permit as well. So I think we're a long way away from that, but as a concept of how to get out of 219 is, is not an issue and we can certainly provide that.
So if I understand correctly, the purpose of the request is for you to be able to get another lot, right? Is to put another lot in this development, right?
That's one, yeah, one of two, correct.
Okay, but that's the purpose?
We're amending the approved recorded subdivision plan.
So that you can put one more lot in?
Yeah.
And what is the size of that lot? What would that lot size be?
It's, it's a little over its records of an acre. It's like .83 acres.
Have you had any conversations with, with the owner of the, the orchard owner, with the, with the adjoining property owner about the removal of the, of the buffer that you're asking for?
Well, I have not. So I'd like to introduce you to Barrett Hoskins.
Want to come up?
He's here too.
Yes, Barrett Hoskins with 339 Just About and Benjamin Marcus Holmes.
Have you had any conversations with the property owner for the orchard regarding the request to have the buffer removed?
Not personally, no.
Do you know anybody as part of your group that has had that conversation with that property owner?
Well, I'm sure Mark Hoskins with our company has discussed it in some regard with them. I know they have a representative here today as well. Now, with the 100-foot buffer, you know, for us, really, you can see a significant portion to our usable space there on that last lot. At one point, there were orchard trees and there still are existing trees that had encroached onto the property about 100 feet, so that kind of gives you the 100-foot buffer there. But being that like those trees are maturing and it's the end of that season, you know, I think it'd be time for us to be able to get that portion of our lot back and have a sellable lot there because if you see there, it's physically impossible for us to build any type of house on that lot as it currently sits with that buffer.
Right, but you agree that that's how, that's how the plan was approved previously is with the 100-foot?
Correct.
Buffer, right?
Yes.
Am I, if I remember correctly, this is some, the 100-foot buffer with the orchard, this was a, the subject of a pretty long discussion we had when this went through us, right?
I had at least, I was part of at least one long discussion, but I came, I came through when this plan was, I didn't come to the township till this plan was already almost done, so I wasn't involved in all those discussions.
I have a recollection of us having, there was a long and detailed discussion about the buffer and about the purposes of it.
I think so.
And then I think that we have a letter from Mr. Simmons here, right?
I believe that was kind of a last minute decision and, and we got the plan through. But on the recorded plan, it does say temporary. So I guess we need to talk about the assumptions of, you know, what define temporary. And I guess I assume that, you know, we give them this harvest, harvest the peaches and, and then we're done. That's what my assumption, I don't know what, what this committee's assumption was.
Usually, we're pretty good about when we, at least on, on our end, I don't know what happened at the council, but when we said, when we talk about temporary and we talk about, was there, is there a definition of temporary somewhere in the approval that you've seen?
On the recorded plan, it says temporary to be removed when the applicable EPA regulations have been met.
Okay.
And I did ask the applicant to provide evidence that those regulation, that the applicable regulations have been met.
Okay.
So, just one second. So what is the regulation?
And that's, that's the question because I remember, one of my conversations I remember this group having was that trying to find where the regulation was and no one could even, no one could really point out to what the specific regulation.
Was it doing like spraying? I don't know why I think it was pesticides or something?
I believe, so I did some Googling on it and, and there's some drilling and penetration in the ground, but the only buffers that I saw on the EPA's website was that 25-foot buffer. I didn't see the 100-foot buffer.
I mean, my, my thought is, is that one of the things that probably needs to happen is that we need to go back and look at the minutes from, you know, from council's approval and just to make sure that, depending, to get the wording correct as far as what was recommended from us as we, as we, when we made our recommendations and what language we used and then what language was utilized by the council when they, you know, when they voted to approve as well.
Yeah.
Because sometimes what ends up on the plans isn't always exactly generally mean it, so I think that's gotta be part of the analysis, right? Because I mean, what, because there's two different things here. Well, one question is, are you asking for an amendment, meaning that, you know, planning commission and council to kind of amend what they previously approved? Or are you saying that you've satisfied
Right.
the regu- the requirements that are set forth on the existing plan? Because those are two different things. One is asking us to make a modification and
We're not looking.
and do that. Another thing is, is you guys coming in and saying, we've met this requirement, this, this should not be part of our requirements anymore. Those, I mean, those are two different.
Well, you think about the economics, the orchard encroached on, on, which is now my client's property, so I guess it was a good faith, give you a buffer, let you finish out the season and, and then we're done.
Yeah, I get that that's your interpretation of it, right? I get that that's your interpretation of it. I think that, and listen to, I think we should probably hear from the, the representative from the, from the adjoining landowner as well, but my, my thought is, again, I get, I get that's your position, but I don't think we have enough information right now to
And I
see if we agree with that or not.
Understood. And I did want to point out, we're not asking for an extinguishment of a complete buffer. As you can see on the plan there, to the left of the lot, there is a 25-foot buffer in place. So we just want to return it to the standard 25-foot farm buffer on our side. That's part of our open space, that's our 25-foot buffer. And that's exactly what the township requirement is as well for the, for the ordinance in that regard. So, yeah, and, and as far as the EPA, like unless the, the landowner on the adjacent property has like an EPA regulation there, but everybody's kind of going into it blind because there's nothing that points, as you guys said, points to what that, what that is.
Yeah, I think that I don't know that at this point because I think we need to, I just don't feel like I have enough information in order to
Right, I would agree.
to render an opinion here. And again, the question again goes, also goes to as far as who's required. I mean, the, the regulation of the, if the, if the approval is based upon that the EPA regulation being modified or satisfied, then the other question is, is who, who's required to show that and it might be you guys. So I just feel that I don't have enough information at this point.
Well, the EPA application for the buffer wouldn't be in our name at all. We're, we're not the farmer. So I don't know, we haven't seen it. I don't know if there's one in place yet or not, so I guess we wait and see. So you're asking for the EPA paperwork? We don't have it. So it's not our, it's not our easement.
So I think a basic condition that we're asking for is if you're saying you've satisfied the conditions to have it removed, what are the conditions as defined and how have you satisfied it? That's what I think we want to
I guess the timing, I, again, my assumption, the timing, like we don't want to go in and start ripping out trees when there's economic benefit for them, so once that expires and it harvests.
Right, and that's fine and that's an interpretation, but what we're asking really for is I think something more concrete than that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just, yeah, I don't know how I'm, like, again, I think we probably should hear from Mr. Simmons because I'm not sure how my company can represent any type of EPA regulations that are being met when it's not my product or what I'm doing.
Your company is representing that you satisfied certain conditions, but you can't define the conditions and that's what we're asking.
Well, there was no condition set out as well to, to define. So we're, so there's a lot of assumptions, so maybe if we hear.
Did we talk to the solicitor on this?
Well, he hasn't been moved in on this at this time.
Yeah, I really feel like the first thing to do is to go back and look at the minutes from both the planning commission and councils.
I'll do one better, I'll just watch the videos from those meetings.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. That way then we can start at a baseline and know where it is we're starting from.
EPA, you actually put those initials into a reportable document?
Yeah, like where that came from.
It had to come from somewhere.
Yeah, that wording, I think, came from council, but
Yeah.
I haven't seen, and maybe Mr. Simmons has, has the documentation, but I don't know.
Okay, all right.
And then on 219, that lot, real quick, just to circle back here, I know we were trying to realign the intersection here, so, you know, our plan would be to have the, most likely as long as H O P approves, have the driveway around this side to not interfere at that intersection. I knew that was one of your questions. And the grade, it does sit down below a little bit, but as part of our grading plan, we'd be bringing that up to grade, so it's not, you know, having an issue with any kind of water or wetlands or anything like that, sitting down. But again, not part of the current grading plan based on the road realignment, so there's a lot of things that we're going into it. We have the road realignment, certain grading that was going to be done with the realignment. Now that that realignment's changed and that lot being available again, the grading plan would just be altered to, to show that house not sitting drastically below the road.
Jim, would that be allowed for it to have its own separate, you're talking about a separate?
Driveway.
Driveway.
All those lots along Just About have their own driveways.
Oh, oh, you're talking about driveway, not entrance and exit from the plan itself?
Correct, yeah, just a, just a, just a one driveway.
Just its own driveway, okay.
And then Peters Township Sanitary Authority has no issues with, with additional lots.
Keith, would you guys possibly consider just doing the proposed lot 219 and not address the buffer issue today?
Like, split them apart, just table the buffer?
Well, I'm just wondering, it sounds like this lot may not be an issue 219 adding it, or does it?
We'd like to see the grading plan.
Oh, okay.
We'd really like to see that, just to make
So you don't have the grading plan yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, okay. Do you mind if we bring?
No, 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 no.
Bob Simmons, 170 Simmons Road. I've been a resident of Peters Township for 62 years. First, I think I'll start with, I'm gonna clarify what Barrett was saying there. This year, he said they, they were gracious enough to let us, you know, harvest the crop. The trees that are here, that were here, I was forbid, I, I, I didn't touch those trees, I harvested nothing. Hoskins harvested those pe- those peaches, okay? I was, that, it has nothing to do with the pe- the few peach trees that are left in there. When I came to council to tell them that I thought this cul-de-sac was jammed against me and what it was going to do was I was going to have to, you have to put 100-foot this here into my peach orchard, it's here. So I came and I said, well, you know, I'm gonna lose, I can't, I can't care for them. And I did give them somebody, somewhere here in Peters Township, it has the, and it's not EPA, it's Department of Agriculture. They have the regulation. I don't know where EPA came, but I, I, they have, somebody has it, I don't know who.
It had to do with spraying, by the way.
It's, no, it's any activity, spraying, I think spraying is the main one. Correct, that is correct. It's 100-foot is the main one, but it, but it's dust, it's now, it is new. It was just, the Department of Agriculture just introduced it recently because of all the developing that is coming into agricultural areas. So I gave them that and then they didn't say at the, at the meeting exactly, I think they tabled the meeting because of that, or that was one of the reasons. And then Paul and Mark met, that's what I was told. I was not privy to that, I was not at the meeting. I got a call from Paul and said, well, he's, he won't build any houses within, you know, he'll, he'll set, and I, I don't know exactly why you're calling a buffer because nothing's gonna be planted in there or it's not gonna be screening or anything like that. I, I call a setback, it's just, there will be no, you know, and that, that, that's what he told, the, the house would be setback 100-foot to meet the Department of Agricultural, my Department of Agriculture requirement because with all due respect, that was their first. And there is, as far as, it's not an annual crop, I mean, there was, they're young trees, they're, you know, that's, that's gonna be there for 30 years, but if the house ends up close here, I'll, I'll have to take out about 80 trees, you know, or opt to, I, I don't know how I would take care of them. I, I don't know how I would care for the trees if there's an occupied house there. So that's, that's my version of what happened, but I think your minutes things is a, that's, that's a good idea, you need to look at the minutes, that, because that's where it's gonna be. But now, just if I could just have a couple
Please.
Go ahead.
Please.
A couple minutes of your time, I'd like to go over the buffer, the whole buffer zone concept from my point of view of what has happened. I don't know how many years ago you did the comprehensive land use plan, but that's when these buffer zones came in. And I'm, not right now, I'm talking about the 25-foot buffer zone, okay? And I think the two are related, the two work together. Let me explain. So it was, the comprehensive land use plan was very clear that people did want farms to be, stay here in Peters Township and there is conflict wherever there's development and active farming, there's gonna be conflict. So they came up with a law, the 25-foot buffer zone with high level and low level screening, trees at about eight foot, eight foot, I don't know what the details are, but low level and high level screening, that, that's your law. So I would just like to point out, Tuscany 1 was started, what, 13 years ago? Very far between my farm and Tuscany 1. It never went in. One house, there's one house that has the required buffer zone. It is on the plan, it simply was never put in. So I'm gonna have to assume that it's not gonna go in here too, also. I do not know the Department of, I called it Department, and let me get to what I'm getting at. I called the Department of Agriculture many times before I asked for, to do something there about the, this 100-foot setback because I didn't know what the Department of Agriculture's point of view or what they were gonna
I didn't know what the Department of Agriculture's point of view, or what they were going to, how they were going to feel. If there is a 25-foot buffer zone with screening, well, does that mean then I can spray, you know, does that mean I can spray up, you know, right up to my, to my line? I have no idea, and they will not give me an answer. They will not. The only thing, the law says that I am not allowed to, it's dust, noise, spraying, smells, oh, you know, anything that smells bad within 100 feet of any occupied building, you know? So, that's where I'm at. I'm going to lose, there's no question, if house comes close to line, I'm going to lose 80 trees there. There's, there's, there's no question about that. So, and my point about the, I don't think, certainly, I would have to assume since Phase 1 doesn't have any buffer zone whatsoever, the buffer zone is not in here, the house is already built in this lot, or partially built, so it seems to me as though the buffer zone should already be there. The screening should already be in. And the buffer zones are, I mean, I have the picture that the buffer zone's up there, I don't think you really need to see that, I think you know there really is no buffer zone, and I don't think it's going to go in. I, I really don't. So, I really wish you wouldn't take away the 100-foot setback, because I don't think there's going to be any buffer zone whatsoever. It certainly seems that way.
Okay. Thank you. Then, do you, the lot 219, is that?
Oh, that's-
Do you have any comments on it? I just want to make sure.
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't really care about where, and, and I just, I, the other thing that I don't understand, the, the problem really was, I mean, I know there's nothing we can do about it now, but I do not understand why that cul-de-sac was jammed tight against. I have six other cul-de-sacs that come up to my farm. They're all more normal-like, you know, like this, they're, you know, it just seems to me that the cul-de-sac should have been here, and then the backyards, if the backyards came up to my orchard, you know, it'd be great, but the, the way this is, that, that house is going to be within 25 feet of my orchard.
Okay.
You know, that's-
And I just really, I do think the buffer zones are important, and I really wish you wouldn't take them away.
Do you know anything about these not having buffer zones? Is there any?
I don't know the specifics on what the, off the top of my head, what the SADO requires, when they need to go in, but generally, those are considered, it's on, it's on the-
Maybe you can look into that before the next meeting.
I will, I was planning, I was already planning on looking into it tomorrow and getting reaching back to Mr. Simmons.
Yeah, can I make one, we'll come on up. You know, I've been on the other end of that. I built a greenhouse way back, a long time ago. I built a greenhouse. And before the neighbors commented that they thought the sun was going to glare off my, my greenhouses and bother them. So, the township required that I put a buffer zone in, okay, with screening. I couldn't hammer two pieces of wood together until I put that buffer zone in. And I don't understand why that's not the way it is. But, I mean, there's really no point, if the people are moving in before, the, the point of the buffer zone is to reduce conflict between residents and active agriculture. So, if the people are moving in, why wouldn't the buffer zone be in?
What is, what is the status of Tuscany 1?
It doesn't make any sense to have a buffer zone if the people are there and it's not there.
It's finished. Everything's done.
So, the, the screening, I mean, we're, we're not talking about screening tonight, but that, I'm, I'm assuming that that was hatched out during the land development plan, and there's a landscape architect plan in that plan set, and it'll be up to the township to enforce-
Well, that's just a question, that's the question is whether-
Whether it was in there or not.
Well, and the question is if it is in there, it doesn't need to be enforced, so that's something-
Yes, 100%.
So, but it's-
So, I don't think we had, there's no disagreement with the 25-foot farm buffer, and there's no argument here, as far as I know, about screening in that buffer. It's this-
But it's not there.
We're talking about number two. I mean, number two's just dirt right now.
No, the house is there, in this lot. That house is there.
So, you're saying that house is built?
No, it's, it's up and under roof, it just got framed, so, like, we're not even, we're not even 20% done with construction.
Yeah, landscape.
It's not even 20%, it's not even 20% done with construction.
Okay, it's under construction.
It's been under construction for 30 days.
Okay.
That cul-de-sac, though, I just want to point out, that is based on the township's requirement for future connectivity. Obviously, the township does not want all these dead-end cul-de-sacs going everywhere. All developments we've done in the last, whatever, eight to 10 years, require that future connectivity to tie into the next property. So, if they want to ever sell and it becomes a development, the township for fire, EMS, all those different services, they have to be able to get through to the town.
They use a stub, they use a stub, not stuff, the cul-de-sac against the property, they use a road stub.
Yeah, I mean, the stub's on the end there.
That's not even, I mean, that's-
Okay, well, I don't want us to start the part.
No, I'm just pointing out that, like, that wasn't something that we just decided we were going to do because we wanted to encroach on this property or affect the plantings. That is just based on the township requirement.
And that's fine, but there's also more than one way to do that, so why don't we just leave it at that and move on?
Oh, yeah, I mean, that cul-de-sac's approved, it's not even a topic in conversation. But the screening and everything, to your point, would happen, you know, final grading, you know, and all, all that screening will go in at the end.
We'll just have to go with that. Okay. All right, did you guys have anything else?
I'll just pull up the landscaping plan, this shows you what the screening is supposed to look like along that buffer.
So, there are supposed to be all kinds of trees eventually?
That's, that looks like high-level and low-level as required by buffer area.
And I was just curious, how would I farm till the buffer zone goes in? Because that's why I pointed out, Tuscany 1, that's been 13 years. So, is that what we're saying? 13 years from now, we'll get our, I'll get my screening?
I think they'll probably have to do that in connection with the occupancy permit having on, right?
I need to look at, I'll need to look into our requirements more specifically.
Mr. Simmons, we're not saying anything, we're just trying to look into this, we're trying to listen to everybody's speech, that's all.
But I think, you know, on our end, if he's saying that he can have those trees there for 30 years, so I have an unusable lot in perpetuity, I mean, that's, that's not right either. I can't just give up that lot for, for the rest of time. So, as long as he continues to replant the trees and keep using that property the way he's using it, which is his right, obviously, but it's also my right to use the property that I need to use it. So, how do we come to a resolution where I, that lot is unbuildable currently? It's completely unbuildable.
I guess we need to define the temporary.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Staff's recommendation, so you're saying we must make a recommendation to the planning commission by October?
Yeah, unless, unless they request and council grants an extension, but that's what's made, let's see if we can get, we have time before that needs to come up.
So, I'm taking away from this, on 219, you guys like to see a grading plan on 219, based on the new, the new lot position, now that we've removed the lot realignment that was encroaching onto that, that lot now.
Okay.
I can get working on that. Any other audience comments on this? Do you have a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to, unless you guys have anything else you wanted to say? No? I'll make a motion to table the, the Keith Higgins Keystone Survey and Mapping, Inc.
That's the Tuscany-
Tuscany, sorry, 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 the Tuscany 2 Plan of Lot Subdivision Number 2, as recommended by Staff.
I'll second. Hold on a favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is the Dugan Consolidation Plan.
The township is a receipt of a subdivision application from Thomas Dugan and Jessica Blackwell for the Dugan Consolidation Plan at 108 and 112 Doubletree Drive. The property is located in the eastern part of the township in the Old Trail Development. Sorry. Property's located in the eastern part of township in the Old Trail Development. Existing lot 440 is a corner lot located in the intersection of Doubletree Drive and Fox Run Drive. It is about 0.56 acres in size and is currently improved with a two-story brick single-family dwelling constructed in 2000. Existing lot 516 is approximately 0.51 acres in size and is located east of and adjacent to existing lot 440. It is currently vacant except for a fence. Said fence is a six-foot metal fence located on both parcels that encloses an area approximately 6,350 square feet to the east of the dwelling. The APK proposes a consolidation of the two lots to create a new 1.07-acre parcel. Existing lot 440 is non-conforming as the principal structure is situated 24.8 feet from the rear lot line, encroaching on the minimum rear yard setback of 40 feet by 15.2 feet. The proposed consolidation would rectify this nonconformity as shown by the table on the screen. No other nonconformities exist, and the result of the plan would be a single conforming lot. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the Dugan Consolidation Plan, subject to Peters Creek Sanitary Authority approval of the plan. I'll note, three additional recommended conditions were laid out in Staff's report, but a revised plan has been received that addresses these three other conditions.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Oh, please.
Just simple law consolidation.
Any comments, questions?
The owner owns both parcels.
Correct, yeah.
So, she's making a bigger lot.
Right.
Yeah, it's funny, we come across these a lot, like, if they wanted to, like, build a pool on that vacant lot, they wouldn't be allowed to do it, they'd have to consolidate it, so maybe they're just thinking ahead.
They put the fence, the fence goes from one lot to the other.
Right, yeah, how they did that is-
They actually have a permit for that, I was shocked when I saw that. It's from 2006, so, they decided it was okay at that time, I guess.
And some of our adjoining communities, I've actually done it just for a fence. Yeah, it's crazy, so, yeah. Just to consolidate, you know, make it conforming again, but as far as any plans, I know, I have none at the moment.
And it'll make it how large in total then, when they do that?
A little over an acre.
Yeah, 1.07 acres, yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice lot.
Yeah.
I'll, no other comments, I'll make a motion that the Dugan Consolidation Plan be approved, according to Staff's memo dated August 2nd, 2024, with the, it's really just one-
Just the Peters Creek conditions, you know, that's applicable now.
I, I'll speak to that, sorry, I spoke to Peters Creek tonight, I have a meeting with them tomorrow, it should be paperwork.
I'll second.
Hold on a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Brookwood Place Amendment Number 7.
The township is a receipt of a subdivision application from Spurdy Land Surveying on behalf of Infineon Custom Homes for the Brookwood Place Amendment 7 Plan located at 412 to 420 Magnolia Drive. This plan is a re-subdivision of lots 102A through 102E of the Brookwood Place Plan. Brookwood Place is a development of single-family attached dwellings approved under provisions of the mixed residential overlay development. Units in the development surrounding are oriented toward a common space, common open space focal point. The development is approved for 38 total units, of which 28 have been constructed. The remaining units will be constructed in two clusters of five units and are located north of the common open space focal point. The APK proposes a re-subdivision of the western of the two remaining townhome clusters with the lot lines centered on the common walls to allow for fee simple conveyance of each unit. No additional lots are being created and none are being eliminated from the Brookwood Place Development's final plan. This plan is typical of fraud of the previous six amendments already reviewed by the planning commission and approved by council for this development.
Is the applicant here?
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say real quick, Staff recommends that planning commission recommend approval, subject to two conditions listed pertaining to required certificates, affidavits, or approvals.
Please come up, introduce yourself.
Anthony Camp, I'm with Infineon Custom Homes. So, I believe the purpose is, is just to do the lot lines between the units along the party walls from Spurdy.
Is this the last?
There is one more, I believe.
There should be one more, yeah.
One more unit, yeah, 101.
So, no comment from Amendment Number 8 at that?
Yep.
Any questions, comments?
There's been no issues that have arisen after any of the previous?
Not that I'm aware of. Those all predated my time with the township, but those units are all up and occupied at this point.
You guys speak?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the plan for Brookwood Place Amendment 7, subject to the two conditions outlined in the filing here.
I'll second. Hold on a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last, on the agenda is Trax Farms Subdivision Plan Number 5.
The township is a receipt of a subdivision application from Keith Higgins on behalf of Trax Farms, Inc., Ross Family Farm, LLC, and Earl and Diane Trax for the Trax Farms Subdivision Plan Number 5. This plan proposes a transfer of land from two of the subject parcels to the third, enlarging that lot. The property is located in the eastern part of the township along the border with Union Township, is comprised of three lots, about 43.3 acres in total area. Existing lot 1 is located on the northern end of the property under the ownership of Earl and Diane Trax. It is a 2.7-acre flag lot with access to Sugar Camp Road, and is improved with a single-family dwelling. Existing lot 2 is located on the northern end of the property under the ownership of Trax Farms Incorporated. It is a 3.4 acres in area and is triangular in shape with the base at the northern boundary and the eastern leg code terminus with the border with Union Township. Existing lot 3 comprises the majority of the property and is under the ownership of Ross Family Farm, LLC. It is an irregular lot, 37.2 acres in area, and is mostly located south of the other two lot. The APK proposes a transfer of a small sliver of land from existing lot 1 and the portion of existing lot 3 north of Sugar Camp Road to existing lot 2. The plan also indicates that this portion of existing lot 3 is to be transferred, to be transferred, will be transferred to the ownership of Trax Farms, Inc. The newly created lot 2 would be 10.1 acres in area with frontage along Sugar Camp Road. Lot 1 would be 2.6 acres in area, but will not be materially changed except for the loss of the small sliver of land. Lot 3 would lose all of its land north of Sugar Camp Road and would then be 30.6 acres in area. Sorry. Staff is recommending that the planning commission table consideration of the plan to allow for the items listed on the screen to be addressed.
And have you had a chance to talk to Keith about these?
I have not had a chance at this time, no.
Back again. This looks more complicated than it is. So, Trax recently sold their Peters acreage to Ross Family Farm, and this lot 3 crosses the street. Now, everybody was in a rush, the bankers were there, had lawyers, and everybody was ahead of the landfill. This was never supposed to get transferred. So, we're taking this back out of the Ross Family Farm, we're consolidating it with the existing lot, a weird lot floating between Peters and, or in Peters on, on the Union Board. So, just to make this, because Trax is in clean and green, they're going back, last year, maybe two years ago-
Last year.
Mr. Tim Trax had a weird, like, one acre square floating here, so we made this bigger. Now, we're just taking a little sliver back off him to make this new created lot, 10.1 acres, just satisfied clean and green. So, it, it does look kind of weird, but the lot's going to come around, take care of this isolated lot, and consolidate all three, 10.1 acres, and all these items here are, are very simple. Those little clauses, and, you know, I'll talk to you about that access easement, if we don't need it, that's, I mean, that's a delete.
My main concern was over the dedication of a right of way, I wasn't sure how your client would feel about that.
Yeah, well, that's- Yeah, well, that's... So the property crosses Sugar Camp, and the proposed lot line is down the middle of Sugar Camp. Now, I don't know if there's any talk about dedication, but obviously you guys have an easement over Sugar Camp. The dedication, if it's enforced, you know, I'll speak frankly, is there going to be a monetary transfer back?
I'm not authorized to speak on that.
Sure. And if there will be a dedication, we're not going to hit the ten acres for Clean and Green. So we're going to have to go to Mr. Tim Trax and get more, and...
So that's why you got the sliver. Okay, I see.
Correct, correct. So, I mean, there's no, I mean, Trax, or Sugar Camp exists with no dedication right now. So I, I mean, that...
We might back off on that. That will have some internal discussions.
Yeah, I mean, Kim Clarkson is involved, and he had mentioned, yeah, we'll dedicate the right-of-way. Are you going to pay?
I was mostly, I'm mostly concerned with consistency over here, because there's that little sliver that was dedicated with the Tim Trax plan.
Correct.
I mo, I was concerned about having this weird little stub of right-of-way dedication, like, out here, but if...
That's a discussion we can have.
I'm sure the client will give you that easement.
Oh, me?
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that, sorry.
And Mike, we're going to have to discuss that internally now.
So it sounds like there's further discussion to be had there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we, are we good?
So can you talk about, how does a formal dedication happen? Like it says here, the township has requested a dedication. I haven't seen a dedication, like, a request.
So it's basically convert your easement to a fee simple ownership by the township. Basically a taking.
I need...
Dominant domain.
I need to look into that more, what the process is. That's just part of my review.
So right now, the township has through their, is Sugar Camp a township road?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So you have an easement...
It's the only reason to see a road brought up.
And the township's requesting for that to be dedicated.
Want to be very careful with that, though, because the roads in Peters Township, I mean, nearly everyone, other than the new subdivision plans, nearly everybody has title to the center line of the road. So if you start buying this stretch or taking this stretch, you're going to start taking miles and miles and miles, hundreds of miles of township road.
The SALDO, the only, the only reason that's was even brought up is because it there, I go through the SALDO when I'm doing these reviews and just, like, bring things up, and that was something, that was a portion of the code, and this is more in there just for clarity, we need clarity on this.
This is all over the township. What if they're going to start taking all these easements?
Yeah.
No reason?
Yeah. And it's just, you know, it's there, that, you know, there's, and if you need it to widen, I mean, Trax Farms is an institution that, I mean, of course, they're going to work with everybody, but the ten point one acres for that Clean and Green, that would be their sticking point if you did do a taking, because then poor Tim might lose, you know, three quarters of an acre, maybe.
I didn't realize that you guys give a ten, I mean, I knew that was ten or four.
Yeah, so just to get a little kind of, kind of sidebar, the Trax family have been cleaning up their estate, and in Union Township, they did, they did a little subdivision, and then they got a tax bill for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're going to look back. They're going to look back.
So that, that frightened the life out of them. So we really want to stay above that ten acre.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, it sounds to me that, like, you would, you would not want us to vote to recommend it, because then we would incorporate all of the staff's certain comments. So, I mean, it sounds to me like the best interest now is for us to vote to table this. You guys have your discussion on what Peters wants, doesn't want, then come back at the screening, and then we can, once you guys have, kind of have these discussions, because it's not really something we're really all that involved in, you know what I mean, as far as that goes, so.
And I wanted to have, and I did want to have these discussions with you before we move forward with the approvals, so.
I mean, if that's your recommendation, I can go back to the client, and then we can go and have a meeting on this call stuff.
Yeah.
I just think there's too many loose ends, and you don't want us just making a recommendation incorporating all of these recommendations.
Yeah, the dedication, I wouldn't be, actually, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Yes, I'll, I move to table consideration of the Trax Farms Subdivision Number Five to allow more time for discussions on the five enumerated points.
I'll second. Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing tonight is that, before, I put out your places before a meeting, a draft agenda and a sample SALDO amendment. The draft agenda's for the joint workshop meeting between Planning Commission and Council on August 19th. I expect next week that agenda will be finalized, and we will be distributing materials for that. Paul wanted me to distribute that to you members here tonight, just so they can have an advance to review. Mark spent a lot of hours, and I can testify, over the last couple of months working on that SALDO amendment, so we're hoping it can help codify some of these processes we've, that we, and make things a little more smoother going forward.
If I'm just trying to set aside time, like, it's a couple hours usually, three hours?
I have no idea how long these are going to take. It'll probably be a few hours. It'll be at least a couple hours, I would think.
Just so I'm reading this correctly, things that are underlined are changed, and things that are crossed out are obviously crossed out.
Oh, I only looked at the computer, on the computer.
Yeah, crossed out are things being removed, underlines are things being added. And Keith, we are removing that, we are removing the north point, being the upper right.
Anything else, Joe?
Nope, that's all.